I'm like six o'clock today because of elections, so that's why it's early. Just so everybody knows up front. It's starting here. I'm not sure how accurate that is, but we take it, right? We're there, okay. So the community's order and we have everybody here today. And we have some additions to the agenda, two items in the consent agenda and one in personnel. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition? A motion by Lou, second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. We're gonna slide right down then to public comment. Is there anybody here today for public comment? Saying no, we will move on. Approve and correct minutes from the February 24th, 2015 regular board meeting. How make a motion that we approve?
Second.
A second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay. Then we are now on the consent agenda. And we have number one, review and consider approval of notice of desire to negotiate with the district 741 principals association. And I believe we've agreed that we will vote on this all at once.
Yeah.
Isn't that where we're at?
Yeah.
Okay. So number two is review and consider approval of notice of desire to negotiate with Donnie Mayer. Number three is review and consider approval of the following athletic assignment for the 2014-15 school year, assistant golf coach Jay Thompson. So do we have a motion to approve?
So.
A motion by Cheryl.
A second.
A second by Heidi. Any further discussion?
I guess the only thing I would further discuss would be on number two, to actually put what he is. Probably know what why we're doing this.
You'd be our village bronze and we will.
Put that on.
That makes sense, yeah.
That's your point.
Okay. So a motion, I'm assuming we'll stand with that addition?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, then we will move on to personnel. Number one, review and consider approval of childcare leave for Maria Raspason teacher from approximately May 26th through May 29th. I made a motion that we approve. A second by Heidi. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay. Number two, on the petition sheet, review and consider approval of 10.7 by temporary hours per week for.
Marianna.
Marianna, okay. Well, third, paraprofessional effective March 9th, 2015 until student no longer needs transportation supervision or until the end of the 2014-15 school year, whichever comes first.
This is a moral situation in our district, this is the service that we provide at this time, where there's an IP staff coming up on the 19th that will give us more clarification on where we need to work with this. But right now according to IP, you do not have an option of not providing what we're gonna provide here.
I'll make a motion and then we approve. Second by Lou. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, we are now on informational reports. Our elementary school principal report, David Orling. Do you know if there were two smiles? There we go.
Okay, well, this month is food shelf month and the elementary has a number of activities planned each week. If you look at the bench in front of the district office, it's filling up with with food and we also, we also have an activity on Tuesdays where students can bring in change and we collect that also and we'll be doing some activities to round that off at the end of the month. We just completed our jump rope for heart last week and that was very well organized by Mr. Kiefler and Mr. Decker who, with Mr. Varant retiring last year, this was the first both of them had the opportunity to organize it because we do it every other year. And in one day, our students raised $7,562 for the American Heart Association, so that was really cool. This week is National AmeriCorps Week and so we are recognizing Valerie Miller, Terry Davidson, who are our reading corps tutors, and also Corbin Hookstrom, who is our math corps tutor. And on that note, we did hear back from reading corps and math corps and we did, we were awarded two reading corps tutors for next year and also a math corps tutor. And so as we get to the end of the year, we'll continue to evaluate how we're gonna go about filling those positions, but that again is run through the AmeriCorps at virtually no cost to the district. April, we're, it's hard to believe it's, it feels like April, but in a couple weeks, we'll start getting busy with MCA testing with third through fifth graders, class activities, field trips, you know, just the excitement of the end of the school year and it's coming fast. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the secondary school principal report, Lori Fora.
Okay, just like David said, the end of the year seems to start to fly by at this point with so many different things going on. Last night, we had our choir solo ensemble contest here. We had several different students here and our students did their individuals as well as our pops choir did their group program and judges ranked them, et cetera, so we'll probably have those results for you at our next meeting. Jackie Campbell has scheduled our, what we call a junior college meeting for her junior class. We have the different art services in, we have a couple different tech schools come in and we have a couple different four-year school representatives come in, talk to the kids about different programs, what to expect in those situations if they choose different courses there and kind of career outlook. So we have that coming up on March 17th. Our German students head to Germany coming up here on the 19th. And then we have our district in-service day on March 23rd. We're having the tall cops says stop, you can't stop what you don't know speaker that our whole staff will be able to attend, as well as a community program with the same speaker the day before that Sunday afternoon. So we will be sending out information through school reach and the JMC and up on our website starting next week is kind of where that information, I'm expecting it to be in the paper, I believe tomorrow. Paul Wagner, our chief of police is kind of heading up the scheduling of this, so. Then we have our large group choir contest coming up and we had 14 students try out and make for our middle school play, which will be offered at the end of this month, so we're excited about that. Our student council is also working on the food shelf drive that will start here later this month. Our, we have our prom student group working on prom and then we also met with our after prom committee of parents, so they're underway getting that program set up and just, we had several teachers that were just meeting setting up our testing calendar. We have about six weeks, April, excuse me, the beginning of May that will have students testing and this will be our first year that we're giving the ACT, so that is something that all students will be able to take this year here in Haynesville. So any other questions for myself?
Thank you very much. Since we're moving along kind of fast, are you staying Lori?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I can.
Are you staying David? I think there may be some questions come up to end in the other sharing of the board. I'm not sure, but if you guys are around, maybe something you wanna talk about. Okay, next we have community education report from.
Oh, you moved out.
Yeah.
Well, that's good, now the people get to see who you are.
Spring program's going well since our last time I reported, the yard brochure came out. We're currently interviewing this week for our new program coordinator position. Just a reminder for your calendars, the talent showcase will be April 12th at 4:00 p.m. You don't wanna miss that. We are gearing up for summer already, we're always a season ahead and we have a strong winter in the fitness center. And I sent you a link to episode nine of BNC TV last week and where I was looking for more ideas and stories, so feel free to email us on those. Any questions?
The BNC TV is great and the kids look like they're enjoying themselves.
They're fun.
I think some of their interviewing of people like I would be or anybody else could learn, but I think that's absolutely awesome. It's fun to watch it because in a short period of time, it summarizes a lot going on within the school. Do we ever run the BNC on the city?
Yeah, we have our own time slot on channel eight. I met with some of the elementary teachers last week, just trying to just explain that we all have good cameras right in our pockets, our smartphones, so if we could get more just general teachers taking video of things happening and giving us a little blurb, we can expand and always highlight more because there's a lot of things that we aren't covering too that we would like to, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the activities director's report, Max.
Well, we're starting spring sports already this week, so it feels like it outside on like the past two years, it'd be tremendous if we actually had a spring, excuse me. The winter sports are all officially completed, so next month you'll have plenty to proud of, so just some highlights. We had a girl break the school record in scoring for girls basketball for a career. We had a thousand points scorer on our boys team, a third place state wrestling, our subsection runner-up in boys basketball, so those are some highlights for the winter. In March, I'll be attending the state AD conference, last month's booster club meeting, the booster club had agreed to do another spring cleanup day like we did last spring, was the first time we had done that, so that's gonna be the week after Easter. I'm not gonna take credit for this, but a bunch of people partnered up, some money from the district capital fund, community booster club, also contributed to tremendous amounts of field improvements on our outdoor fields for baseball and softball. We've got all the bases for the entirety of those fields or some poles and some of those, but every field had new bases, a bunch of them. The yellow guarding on top of the fence to finish out for the softball field as well as a fence for other baseball and new bases in softball, they have two bases, one for the runner to run over and one for the first base to have their foot, so we were able to get new ones of those for all of those and some, it's just a matter of getting it out of the boxes in my office, not to the field, so that, but with this weather, maybe I could be convinced to get out there too. An update on trap shooting and I met out at the sportsmen's club and it's out at the range and I'm learning as much every time as I meet, but the ranges around my group called the tri-county rangers, which isn't actually the sportsmen's club itself, they're very much supportive of, this is something that what their proposal or their thought was at that meeting was they actually have a program where they do trap shooting during the summertime that anybody can try it for free. And so what they, their meeting in May and so they're gonna get back to me in May, the tri-county rangers do, and they're gonna give me the information on that so we can get it to our students, but they invite any of our students that want to learn more about it to be able to come out there and do that for free. Part of the issue is, is that range is also in New London, also uses that range, so being able to find both personnel and time to be able to utilize that, but again, they were pretty excited and that we were there and they're willing to continue to learn more about if we could bring that into our school or not. Also kind of the big news or the buzz in all the sports right now is the new section competitions came off for all the different sports and we are so much right on the line where we could go so many different directions that we literally do. We go to this, all the way down to the southeast part of the state for baseball and go the complete opposite direction for boys basketball and then go north for girls basketball. The reason being is because we are right on the border, literally, we go to the east for boys basketball and New London goes to the west and there's no district in between us, right? So that is the border and so therefore, all it takes is one school who drops a class or goes down, it's based on enrollment and geography and so there's so many different schools that we get bumped around right on the edge. So and that's a new two-year placement, we'll start next fall for all of the sports, so we'll find ourselves in some different paintings coming up too. I don't know if anybody has any other questions for me, because that's what's going on.
Thank you. Welcome to our board meeting. I see you're smiling, I'm just happy for everybody else to smile a little bit, so. Next, we have the facility and equipment report. I was gonna give a brief summary because I didn't make it for most of the meeting, but my, my take on everything was that we are still assembling our list of things that we would like to get done and we're going to meet at the end of the month to go over that. There was a fair amount of discussion about it, all the topics. Sometimes, you know, I think that with many of our committees, I know the technology committee, everyone that everybody's on, those meetings, even though they're an hour or two long, don't, all the content never gets to the public, but everybody's spending a lot of time in their committees making sure it's done and the facility group is the same. Cheryl, do you have something you'd like to add or Lou? Then I'm on staff development report.
Well, I'm gonna have an even briefer summary. There was an oversight and I wasn't added to the email notification, so.
That would be directed.
Yeah, it did, I got.
You directed, it was not.
Yeah, I got an email later this afternoon that I did get added, so all of a sudden I went to the agenda and I texted Bob and went, um, did I miss a meeting?
Okay.
So I'll give a next update next.
Okay, I can give all words of that nation, I was not at the meeting. Two principals were, they did some talking about, and I'll have this in my report too, some dates about switching to court break and in-service days and I'll fill the board if I get to my report about that. Talk a little bit about the need for additional dollars for site plans, you give each site so much, but they certainly would like more dollars for that so that they go to more staff development pieces. Little bit of talk about the calendar, I think those are the main things.
Okay. Next, we go to continued education report and our superintendent, Robert, she was going to give that report. Did you look up at the camera so they see it from the front?
Might have to get a new camera on that. As far as that, this committee is really putting together, they help staff make sure that they collect all the hours that they need in order to get recertified to do that, so we do spend time cutting and sorting and alphabetizing things, but it's really, for my opinion, it's a really great benefit to the staff here for them to have a committee that can correlate all those hours, let them know where they're at, keep it informative on what they need in order to get recertified.
Okay, and the next one is you again.
Not too much. We're still in the process of our consultants getting bidding for our HVAC project and our roof project. Roof project's pretty close to being ready to bid, we still have a few things to get together for the HVAC stuff with the buildings, we wanna make sure that we're getting the most bang for the buck for the things that we get done with that, so those are being done right now. Calendar, as I mentioned right now, March 24th is the in-service day that was supposed to be a snow makeup day. I'm telling everybody right now, no matter what happens between now and then, we will not make it up as a snow makeup day, all right? Parents need to have that at least in advance and we would like to switch our end of the quarter date and the staff development date with the 23rd and 24th, that so that all of our staff do have the option to go to, teachers can't stop what they don't know and it's really about informing teachers about what's happening in the drug scene right now. So I think it's a great thing, I think it'd be a wonderful thing for parents to go to, I think it's on Sunday then Lori?
The community one is on Friday and then the teacher one will be on Sunday.
Yep, so it'll give our complete staff the opportunity to go to this particular staff and also my switching, that doesn't make any difference as far as parents at all because there won't be a snow makeup day today. Next snow makeup day would be the Monday after Easter if we were to have one, with a little luck, the way this is going so far, we will not need that one also. I think one last piece just to add, I'm going to have somebody come out and present. They gave me, over the week, I asked them to come out and present because I know a number of superintendents are having a look at some new information on solar fields that could be a immense benefit to our district, could save us some money. So I am going to bring somebody out at the next meeting, it's one of those things that I think we need to look at now. I think the longer you wait to do something like this, the less chance you have and you, once you have a presentation, you'll have a good understanding about what it might save us and what has to happen in order for it to take place, but I think it's worth the word to hear that presentation, so I'll bring them out to the next meeting. That's what happened.
First, I would like to add to my report if I could because my group wasn't here yet. I'd like to introduce Jen Andrews and our SAD group is here to tell you a little bit about, we've been working on planning a mock car crash, so I asked them because they've been working very hard with a lot of our community organizations that have been involved in that and arranging it for our whole high school prior prom, so I'd like to possibly give them the floor to talk to you guys and explain.
We're all okay with that, we have time, so.
Okay, thank you.
I know you like reading books, so.
So yes, you guys can introduce yourselves in the microphone and then.
You can actually, if you want to.
You can take a microphone. I'll.
Okay, I'm Allison and I am the ninth grade representative for SAD. This is Tatum and that's Becca. Our advisors are Mrs. Ait and Heather Anderson. We are representing all of our SAD group. We pretty much pick an idea for every school each year to do a project for every school, so we're not disincluding anybody. The elementary school, we are painting ceiling tiles with inspirational quotes. That will go above our buddy bench that the SAD group did last year. After, well, the quotes will be done probably by the end of March, hopefully. Following the quotes, we will be doing a skit with the elementary school kids and then going out for recess with all of them. For middle school, we are targeting the eighth graders, we are doing a skit and then we're having just a discussion in groups and that will be followed by fun games. High school is the mock car crash. And then we are also doing service for kids while parents can attend, the teachers can't stop what they don't know drugs talk, so I don't know what we have, but.
All right, I'm Becca Wogard, I'm one of the 10th grade SAD reps. And along with our mock car crash, that takes place on Thursday, the whole week we're gonna be doing some activities leading up to that. So on Monday, we're gonna have SAD people stationed at every stop sign entering into the high school parking lot, so that when cars are driving to school, we'll stop them and if they are seat belted, we will give them a lifesaver and if they're not, we'll give them a fake ticket, yep, that will say how much a real ticket would cost if they were given it, just to kind of show them that. And then Tuesday, we're gonna be doing a little special on the BNC bold eye news channel for the school to watch and it'll just kind of say what the mock car crash will be and just kind of inform them about that. Then Wednesday, we're just kind of gonna lay low and in preparation for the big day Thursday, which will be the actual mock car crash and that's April 30th and that'll be from 12:30 to 3 o'clock. And then Friday, we're gonna do the stop sign thing again by the parking lot to see if our mock car crash made any impact from Monday to Friday to see if more people were in their seatbelts.
Okay, my name is Tatum Spanning, I'm the other 10th grade rep along with Becca. And I'm just gonna tell you all the details about the mock car crash. It's gonna be in the south parking lot, which is that one right over there by the FFA food plot in the baseball fields. It's gonna start at 12:30 and there's gonna be announcement over the intercom. It's gonna be like a fake 911 thing and it'll be like, all students, please report out to whatever action thing. There's gonna be two cars involved and they'll be collab, the scene will already like have happened and one, one of like the actors or whatever will be deceased, one will be treatable and one will be under the influence of something. And we'll have the EMTs, the local police force, let's see. The fire departments from the surrounding communities, so like Lake Henry and stuff like that and what else? Johnson Funeral Home and the helicopter lifelink, if they are not busy, they will be doing a flyover. And then afterwards, we're gonna have a meeting in the auditorium and it'll be a question and answer section. And then also, Mr. Larson, who is the student principal to Mrs. Flar, will be speaking about the loss of his son and possibly Jackie Osterhals will come and speak too. And, yeah, that'll be it.
Do you guys have any questions for us?
Fantastic. You guys are having a nice field there.
That is great. We're very excited for it. And they worked very hard in getting all of the groups involved and it's not a small task and all the organizations that were very grateful for donating their time and services and everything that is happening for our students, so still a lot of work to do.
Yeah.
Parents will be informed through with the school reach piece.
Yes, parents will be informed through the school reach and then also, we are putting an article in the press about, just to inform the community of what's happening so they don't get freaked out, there's lots of emergency staff here, so there will be a thing in that. And then the community is also invited to attend and watch and then if there are any available seats in the auditorium afterwards, parents and other community members are welcome to come in after all the students are coming.
And the kids in the car, obviously their parents have to be, they have to sign.
Very good, very good. Thank you very much, thanks for coming.
Yeah. Thanks for ladies.
Okay, and then we then are, I had to tell you a little bit, we have others sharing of board and administration and a few things have, have just come up, just lots to move forward. I'm just gonna throw out the titles, a project need to wait, curiosity of how this is growing this coming year, career and technical education. Myself and another board member crashed a meeting at Bassel Cucato where they were trying to pursue this and it was very interesting. Randy was with us, or I was with Randy, Randy followed up. Do you have anything in my pack, one that Randy specific?
Yeah, that was really very, very.
Yeah, that was really very, very interesting, on how they got involved in that part of it, because the community's been a big part of any CTE program out there. And they had a lot of people show up, just like people, teachers and board members, whatever, going out to the community and asking people to show up, from business people to any person in the district that's concerned about it. And these classes in Dassault, they realized that they need to do something, because the schools are not offering enough of it. And it's funny you bring this up, because today with Painsill, they had capital, and we went through pipe representatives over there, and we spent time on facility funding. We spent time on the requesting a 3 and a 3% funding increase for the schools. And surprisingly, we spent time on CTE, some of the representatives, and they've realized that the schools have gone so far to college side, which is great, we have to offer those, but we're leaving the kids on the other side that don't want to go to college, who want to go to two-year college, we're letting them sit. And there you see it, and I think you're gonna see proposals for more funding for that. So, and Dassault du Cadeau is taking the lead on a lot of this, and it's very interesting how they're set up. And I would like to see Painsill go through this. Get the community and be involved, let's see what they think, what, maybe they got a totally different ideal of what I think. But we'll find out if we can get them involved, and there's ways we can do that.
Okay. And then, curiosity, I know that we're in the process of scheduling this year, have we added college credits this year? Are we going to meet for the kids next year?
We are the ones that we would be, the classes we are looking at, or we're looking at proposing is the two project lead the way that kind of fall into that scope of covering two-year programs and the college courses would be the, for the high schools, the principles of engineering that bring in the drafting, the automation, the robotics, all of those pieces which kind of facilitate a lot of the programs in the two-year school as well as the four-year school. Designed a lot like our principles of biomedical, so it's very similar in that scope. And then in the eighth grade, looking at the robotics and automation that would draw from what the seventh graders had this year, which is the modeling and design. So it's that next step up in looking at the program and programming and taking the Vex robots and putting them together and actually making them work, that curriculum for the eighth grade. So it's kind of bringing in that, more of the CTE emphasis and bringing in more of that hands-on curriculum. With that, following our meeting the other week, I have to go. We have followed, I have followed up with Mr. Gunther, and in our conversation, it does look with a very small cost in our curriculum. We could actually facilitate having our students going through the land trans program, getting certified in the light auto mechanics and maintenance. One, there would be probably a cost of about $2,000 in books to update our current books to, because cars have changed so much since we purchased the last grouping of books, but that would be a curriculum he's very interested in. And we could rent out the testing center up at the St. Cloud, at St. Cloud Tech, and he could facilitate that test, and our kids could actually be certified. So we could offer or begin looking at those tracks and then, you know, spreading out over some of our other areas. And again, it would fit what we have going, where we can't really add classes, because our student population isn't growing, isn't growing. But we could take a current class that we have, which is our land trans, and improve it and offer that certification, so it would be a step in that, in that direction. Also, I do have Scott and myself are kind of splitting businesses, and we are looking at getting out to businesses, kind of talking about Project Lead the Way, and setting up hopefully a manufacturing and industry tour, finding if businesses could facilitate having like 10 or 15 students kind of walk their building and have them talk about their program or their business, and then come back and do kind of a recap of that. And then we also have, it's gonna be an open field trip for students 9 through 12, that I did get a grant, Hukar Perkins, to go up to St. Cloud State and go there to their St. Cloud, or their new science and technology building, and their computer pro, computer and controls lab, and some of their other labs. By Austin Magidance is one of our seniors that graduated about four years ago. He needs to do a community outreach project. And he will take us through that lab, and some of the professors up there will take us through some of the different projects for companies up there. One of the things that they have is they have three nine-foot screens built into the floor that they do programming in, they come up with like a three-dimensional, it's for 911. It's for one of the projects, is they're creating a new 911 program. So we do that, and then they have some of the different people in the areas of science and technology talk with our students, and kind of do, and then Austin is gonna do a program on the drafting and architecture and design, and some of the different careers and the need for students to start looking and pursuing some of those careers. So I'm hoping our students will take advantage of that field trip and will get a full bus to go up. So I'm gonna kind of open that up to all students, and that's, so that's how it's new on that end.
So Randy and I also were on the Project Lead the Way thing, and we talked about meeting, I just was applying for that. But in that process, we went down here where they were working on, where they started with the crime scene earlier this year. Very cool. But can, we've got both of you here, could you also tell the rest of the board about that new class that you had? It was something that these people just kind of pulled out of a hat, to offer something that kind of combines career training stuff with an art class. So will you guys go ahead and tell us about it, or the rest of the board, so they can some?
Right. Mike and I have been brainstorming, and I think Project Lead the Way kind of took the emphasis, but this was something that also came up. It was, how do we take a class and a skill that one will, because we have too many kids for what we could offer for arts, if you remember our last scheduling, we had 112 kids that wanted, needed to take an art class, but we could only fit 75 into the schedule. So how can we balance that, because we can't double this way? And there's some kids that, no, the visual arts isn't really their thing, or the drawing. And Mike came up with the idea of looking at metals and fabrication and sculptures and things like that. So we put together a curriculum, got it okay by the state, and he worked with Kelly on that, and I will let him tell you what he came up with. Do you wanna talk about the class?
Close help, creative, I'm working design. And we cover a lot of interesting things, start with metals, different types of metals, are you joined metals? We're kind of making artistic projects, we made a bird. We kind of repurposed some sheet metal from old cars, we used plasma cutters, we used English wheels, all kinds of different, different things we have, we have shrinker structures, a bunch of different tools, hand tools. And we had to make these birds, you know, we gave them parameters like that, started with a certain size of sheet metal. You had to cut it however you wanted, grind it wherever you wanted, you had to have 12 pieces, you had to assemble it, and it kind of had a resemble bird when you're done. Plus, we had nuts and bolts and screws and a bunch of things laying around for eyes and legs and feet and heads and beaks and everything else. So first project turned out pretty cool, we have a bunch of little birds running around there. And then the next project was kind of moving into a picture where, again, we're making it out of metal. We've got some steel donated from Moose Industries. And we started out with a basically a foot-by-foot piece of 20-gauge steel. We have a bead roller, so we rolled a bead around the outside, so it looks like a picture frame. Started off, and I said, well, what we have to do is, we're gonna use a piece of coat hanger, cut small sections out of it so we can make a 3D portrait out of it. So you're gonna, whatever you want your symbols, your picture to be, we're gonna take a couple pieces of coat hanger and weld everything on, so you have two different levels coming out from the picture. So that's kind of, some did like one Lake Henry baseball symbol, another, there's a bunch of different things, like 16, 18 women there, did different things, they just did their own little portraits. We made 3D portraits, so we bought some spray paint and painted them and stuff. That was another one of our projects, we're doing some other kind of projects, we're making like a, we're making a two-foot trophy. They have to pick kind of what sports they want, or a sport, or an event they want to make the trophy for, they have to theme it, then they have to design it. Again, out of a bunch of extra metal we've had laying around, like car brake rotors, brake pads, I mean, new joints, whatever we have around, whatever makes the shape and kind of, and with the standards and stuff, so they kind of have a chance to look, really can research their projects, they can see what's out there, they can kind of measure shapes, and again, cutting weld, working with steel, kind of making projects. But that's, that's kind of how it's been going, it's been going good, I mean, the kids seem to really like it. The only thing is, we're a little bit, we all have limited amount of equipment, so they kind of have to share the equipment and the grinders and everything, but we're working with that, getting everything set up. But yeah, it's been going good, it's been great, I mean, the kids are interested in the projects, and they all, and I'm kind of letting them build their theme towards what they want to have, you know, most of them are interested in sports, or football, or basketball, so they kind of theme their projects towards what they like, so that really seems to help too, but it's been going really good. I mean, the kids have been busy every day, and most of the time, the only problem is, there's not enough time in the hour to get their stuff done. They want to get more stuff done, so it goes by pretty fast. But it's been, it's been great, you know, with our credit and stuff, and they get to build and create and paint and cut, and they learn how to weld, they learn how to plasma cut, they learn how to use an English wheel and create shapes and curves, and pretty much anything out of metal.
Great. Look at all the great things happening in, happening at the Painsill school system. You guys did talk about the possibility of having some kind of a showcase area where the stuff that's over at the trans, or the auto trans building would come over here, so kids could see what was up. You know, you may have, some of the students may not know this is a possibility, but it was something we discovered in this thing, and there's just two of us there, and there's seven of us on the board, and we all need to know what's going on. And the public needs to know what's going on, we have a lot of stuff going on in this school, we just need to tell you more about it.
The kids in biomedical, they were really excited, they really enjoyed it.
And that's, and that's seeing those, and actually having visited other schools, I was so hesitant. You know, what group would the Project Lead the Way, and I kind of see that that class reach, but I'm seeing it reach kids across the whole scope. And that's what's really exciting, to see, you know, kids in, at this level and this level so excited about what they're doing, learning, and finding career paths of their interests, or just the experience. And I think we're on the right path, it just always, you want to get there sooner.
No, it was very good, very good all together.
And we don't see the kids in your class, because they were.
Those are, those are opportunities for, even for showcase, whether it's parents' night here or whatever, there should always be some activity, something displayed somewhere on some of these activities. Unusual activities that we're doing that engages the kids differently than what conventional stuff is. Because we all know what school was back when we went to school, but this day and age, there's so many other things that we're able to do it. We just need to pull those out just periodically, and then just show parents when they're coming through and so on and so forth, because, you know, those are neat things to look at and roll at, that our kids are able to do it. Even for like the younger kids coming up to the high school, and that can even be implemented in the elementary. You know, you never, you know, there's, there's all kinds of different ways of expanding on arts or other curriculum and stuff like that. And that's where the teachers are, they're the ones that are, the experts, they're the ones that are always gonna be able to hopefully come up with an innovative idea of trying to get the kids engaged, because nowadays, kids want activities, they want to do something, they don't want to just sit there and read all the time. They want that hands-on experience, I think, so.
Great. Any other comments from the management?
Mr. Gunther, just out of curiosity, are there any girls in your art class?
There is one.
Okay, I was just curious.
I hope I get many more too, because I think now that they kind of, what's out there, hopefully there is. There's some, there's smaller projects, it's kind of an easy scope, you know, to work on, so yeah, I hope to get many more.
And that was one of the criteria when we were looking at what can we do, is that is one group that we haven't been able to get engaged, or at least to give it that area a try. So that was one of the pieces that we're hoping we'll be able to play off of, and the experience of this one, and just get some little birds running around here, they'll see them, and be interested.
Any other comments of the board or? I just have one more thing. What I see is that we have kind of, my impression is, we have kind of burst through the doors a little bit to get out to the public and tell them about what's going on. We've talked about it with all the purchases that we have, the public authorized this with a whole bunch of money to spend. And what we can't have happen, and we have most everybody here, is we can't keep it a secret to ourselves. We have to tell people what we're doing and all the great things that are going on. Many of you are within the system, I have not to be, all of us are not in the system. There's so many things going on that we don't even know that are absolutely fantastic, we just need to get the word out. So we kind of leave it to you guys, everybody, all the, of everybody to get this to the press or wherever we need to. I know BNC Television, for those at home, many times will cover all these topics. But we need to just see really what's happening here, there's a lot of interesting things going on, and we are doing everything we can to spend that money appropriately and have a lot of growth for the kids, so.
I think community involvement is a big thing for the school, get more people involved in that. And there's many ways of doing it, and I think things will change too, you know, for the better.
Okay, anything else? We don't often have a little bit of time here, so, do we have a motion to adjourn? Mike, did you have some?
Nope.
Oh, it's not, I don't, but Matt's up and just going down. Do we have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion by Cheryl to adjourn. And we have a second, I'll favor say aye. All right, pause it now.